Good evening and welcome to Monday, January 3rd, 2024, City Council Meeting, 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers 111 East Maple. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Tim Allison, the Chaplain for the Visiting Nurses Association. Also, please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we humbly ask you today for your compassion, your wisdom, and your guidance as we have this meeting and talk about important business. Help us to know that the business that we are thinking about and talking about tonight involves real people with real needs and real hopes and dreams. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. And could I ask for a motion to do presentations, resolutions, and proclamations first, please?
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so we'll do the resolutions first. The first resolution, and we are very proud to give this one, is to Lilia White for the I-STAR Award. So is Lilia here? Okay. Well, we'll give the proclamation, and if she shows up, then we'll do the photo. So, whereas recognition of the service program recognizes outstanding performance, exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the I-STAR Award in Independence for service teamwork above responsibilities, the award recipient exhibits the qualities and ideals that best represent public service. The Services Recognition Committee has selected Lilia White, Account Information Representative with the Municipal Services Department, as the I-STAR recipient for June 2024. Therefore, it is resolved that the City Council, the City of Independence, does the following: The City Council shall recognize Lilia White, and we want to give her the recipient of the I-STAR Award for June 2024. So can we have a motion, we have a motion, a resolution in front of the table, get a motion in a second, and we'll pass it.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and with this, we do need to take a roll call, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And we'll hold that one right there, if Lilia comes in. And we have another proclamation for the Harry S. Truman Chapter for the Sons of the American Revolution, recognizing Flag Day. And June 14, 2024, is the 108th anniversary of the National Flag Day, as determined by the Second Congressional Congress and the Flag Day Act of June 14, 17, and 77, making the 13 red and striped, red and white striped flag with the 13 stars and the field of blue representing the first states and colonies. And whereas our patriots ancestors risking their lives and fortunes to form a new, perfect nation, based on the Jeffersonian ideal of equality led by democratic ruled government and a free and open system of education to train citizens to be leaders. And whereas the Flag Act of 1794 was enacted by Congress to provide a modern rule of having 15 stripes to represent the original 15 colonies and having the number of stars to match the number of states, it also provided the subsequent change in the number of stars made on July 4th of Independence Day the following year. So with that, I, Mayor Roy Rowland, by virtue of the office vested in me, do proclaim January 14, 2024, as National Flag Day. Come on, and we'll present the proclamation. And the next proclamation we have is that the City of Independence is committed to protecting the safety and security of well-being of our citizens and residents. And whereas gun violence has had a devastating, excuse me, devastating impact on too many lives and too many families across our nation, including here in Independence. And whereas reducing gun violence requires a comprehensive approach involving prevention, intervention, accountability measures. And whereas we must work to address the root causes that lead to gun violence, such as poverty, trauma, mental illness, and lack of economic opportunities. And whereas law enforcement and the justice system must have adequate resources to combat illegal gun trafficking and prosecute gun crimes to the fullest extent. Therefore, I call on all residents of the City of Independence to work together, citizens, families, educators, faith leaders, law enforcement, business, and government, to build a safer and more peaceful independence through prevention, intervention, and accountability. And with that, I will now present the proclamation to Deborah Powell. So Deborah, please come forward. Next, we have citizens' request, and Deborah Powell, you can come on up, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Deborah Powell, and I am a supporter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Safety in America, as are my friends who are here with me today. And we are working in conjunction with the Wear Orange Program, and always since 2013, on the first weekend in June, or the, well, this year it'll be the second weekend, but the beginning of June, they have Wear Orange, and it's to commemorate and to honor survivors of gun violence. And in America, over 43,000 are killed with guns each year, and approximately 76,000 Americans are shot and wounded in America each year. It is the first cause of death for children and teens in America. And I believe we can do better than this. And I think we can all work together. I think we can do things to help alleviate this problem. We can visualize a freedom, a future with freedom from gun violence. And we can all work together to make it better. And that's what Wear Orange is for. It's to raise awareness of gun violence and to, as I said, honor the survivors. And I just want to mention that we do recently have a new law in Missouri. Blair's Law did pass, and it will make everyone in Missouri safe, safer. It outlaws celebratory gunfire. So that just shows that our legislators could come together on this law and do something to protect us here in Missouri. So, thank you all for the proclamation today, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the reports or recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you. Does anyone want to pull any items for separate consideration?
Do you want a second first?
Please.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Would anybody like to pull anything for separate consideration?
Number seven, please.
Number seven. Any other items for separate consideration? Going once, going twice. Okay. We've got a motion in a second for all the others' consent items. We'll go ahead and approve that, and then we'll come back to number seven that has been pulled out separately. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. And that brings us to item number seven. Councilmember Fears, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding from staff is that they have provided an amendment to all of us for some minor changes, basically cleaning up the original scheduled fees, and so just kind of reformatting. That was distributed, I believe, in the last day or two, so I move for that amendment.
Okay. Second. We've got a motion and a second for the amendment.
First, I need to make a motion for the whole thing, don't I?
Well, you can, and we can do the amendment and make the motion for that.
All right, we'll do the amendment, all right.
All right. Anyone else? Any discussion on the amendment? Any concerns or questions about the amendment? All right, we've got the amendment. If there's no questions or concerns about the amendment, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment to item number seven.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the amendment passes six members, yep. Sorry, thank you very much. Only six members today, sorry. With that being said, Councilmember Fears, you have the floor for the main item.
I'll move item number seven as amended.
We have a motion for item number seven.
Second.
Second. So we've got a motion and a second for item number seven. Any discussion on item number seven?
To inquire of the City Manager.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you just give just a basic overview for the people who are watching about the intent of the fees and schedule?
Yes. So some may be familiar with the Hancock Provision of the Missouri State Constitution. That prohibits local government from, in essence, making a profit off of the services that we provide. We can only cover the costs that we expend, but we can't charge more than what it costs us to provide that service. From time to time, we do review our fee schedule to make sure the charges that we are providing for our services are keeping pace with the actual cost. So what the council is considering here tonight are some updates to that fee schedule. As required by law, they have been reviewed to ensure we are not charging more than what it would cost us to provide the service. We've compared to our surrounding municipalities and found that we are either at or below what they are charging for similar services. So this is just allowing us more cost recovery for the services we provide without making any sort of surplus collection.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Other questions or comments on item number seven?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Not so much particularly what we're discussing here, but it does dovetail into it, Mr. City Manager. With some of the sophistications with the Independence Square in Inglewood, with some of our groups have multiple events during the year, is there a way or a path forward to do maybe one special event per minute for a season, for using the Square Association as the example, so they don't have to keep reapplying to do traffic studies and all the stuff that's required with that?
That's something we would certainly be willing to look at and look to be a good partner with our neighborhood associations and business associations.
Okay, great. Then I'll do some follow-up with you.
Perfect. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number seven.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And item number six passes, or excuse me, item number seven passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-034, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C to general commercial and District R 12 to family residential to District R 6, single-family residential for the property at 9519 East Truman Road, second reading.
Any discussion on 24-034?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As you might recall, a couple of Mondays ago during our business meeting, we postponed these two items, the 24-034 and 24-035 for six months. Since then, they have, per the City Manager's email, they have brought all things into compliance to move forward with these rezonings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Anyone else other further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24-034.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And this item is approved, 24-034 is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-035. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-035, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R 30/ PUD, High Density Residential, to R 6, Single Family Residential, for the property at 120 East College Street, second reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for 24-035.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Item number 24-035 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-038. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-038, second reading, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the state investment in local public health services grant program for the period of June 1, 2024 through May 31, 2025, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $118,386, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 24-038? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Item 24-038 passes six in favor, zero opposed. And that brings us to 24-039.
24-039, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat for Waiters Place, replat A in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, second reading.
Any discussion on this item here? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24-039.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 24-039 passes six in favor and zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-041, first reading, an ordinance adopting the annual operating and capital budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri, for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, estimating the revenues for said fiscal year, appropriating sums for the purposes stated in said budget, establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization, and designating those who may make a requisition for encumbrances against appropriations, first reading.
Thank you. Please proceed.
24-042, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the Rockwood Storm Drainage Improvement Project, Project Number 132202, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, first reading. 24-043, first reading, an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 5 of the City Code by enacting new sections to revise and clarify the requirements for extended stay hotels, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Per the item in the agenda on information only, I'd like to make a motion that we, following this meeting, go into executive session for items permitted under legal matters, 610-0211.
I second.
We've got a motion and a second. Very good. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and we have six in favor and zero opposed to go into executive session as soon as this meeting is concluded. This brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a minute since we've been here. I just want to say a big thank you and a good shout-out during Memorial Day. The parks looked great. I swung by Woodlawn Park in San Hyde to Perry and the guys over there. Those guys did a pretty good, well, a great job getting that park, the cemetery, up to snuff and where it was at. So, good job there. I want to say Northwest Cleanup, thank you to PD for providing traffic control, the Municipal Services for providing the trash and the trash bags, gloves, and vests. So, good turnout there. Was able to pick up a lot of stuff and trash. Strawberry Festival, wasn't able to make it to that one. I know others have, so I'll let them speak to it. It's just a fun time in Independence with a lot of different festivities and things going on. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vought?
Yes. So usually my work schedule interferes with me attending a lot of events, but I am happy that I have been able to attend a couple recently. So last week, I had the pleasure of attending my first ribbon-cutting ceremony for the newly renovated Walmart Neighborhood Market. It's beautiful inside, but it's going to take me a little bit to get acquainted with it again and find all of my staples that I need. And what great community partners that they are, they've handed out, or at the ceremony, they handed out three $1,000 checks to local nonprofit groups, Mother's Refuge, the Harry S. Truman Children's Neurological Center, and Renewed Hearts, and that was really great to see. I did attend my very first Strawberry Festival at the Veil Mansion, which I hear was one of the best turnouts that they've had. It was great weather. It was a lot of fun. It was a free event. So if you have not attended that, I think next year you need to put that on your calendar. Also, I attended, or I visited the National Frontier Trails Museum for the first time since it has temporarily moved into the Truman Memorial Building. The space may be smaller, but the story and the presentation are well-done, and it still provides an engaging experience for the visitors. It's very easy to navigate and see the exhibits, and the reading is perfect, like not too much, not too little. So they've done a great job showcasing the uniqueness of our local history, and it's free. So I encourage anyone who hasn't visited yet to do so and consider supporting with a donation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things tonight. Last week, we had a brand-new aerial fire truck delivered to the city that was ordered in 2021, that I got to see and take pictures of, and I got to climb on top of it, which was fun. The best, I mean, it's a beautiful truck. It's going to be great for Station 7. And it was built in Missouri by a company called Precision Fire Apparatus. So a couple of gentlemen that were with that company were there, and they were doing some testing. So if you see a brand-new fire truck with a seven on it, that's our new quint. I would also wanted to let everyone know that this Friday at 9:00 AM, the East Independence Branch of the Mid-Continent Public Library opens at 9:00 AM. I'm sure a lot of you have seen this building. It's absolutely stunning. We're so lucky to have it here. And they're having an opening ceremony this Friday. It's open to the public, so if you get a chance, stop by. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have noticed, we had a little bit of a storm recently, and our IPL teams were working like crazy to restore. We had 30 poles knocked down. We had uncounted number of trees take out lines. We had injuries to transformers. And our team performed beautifully and got people up as fast as possible, even considering the complexity of that. Special shout-out to Jennifer and Mary, who kept the community appraised on social media of where the outages were, where the map was, how to report things. So, just well-done overall. I wanted to also say that we had the City of Independence Service Recognition Dinner, where we recognized 10 employees for their 20, 25, 30, and 40 years of service to the city. Those 10 employees had a cumulative service of 255 years of excellence and dedication to the City of Independence. So, special congratulations to them. I think, is Jason Newkirk here? He was one of the folks who was recognized. Okay. We have two events coming up that I think are really interesting. If you're a history nerd like I am, these things are worth knowing about. You may be familiar with the neighborhood in Independence called the Neck, and this was a neighborhood established in 1877. This was a black neighborhood. You may have visited it. It's called McCoy Park now. And during the period of urban renewal, all of those families were taken out of that neighborhood. I will admit that they got paid less than their houses were worth, and by 1966, the entire neighborhood was demolished. We have a few markers over in the McCoy neighborhood to recognize those, but we wanted to also put in stone the families that used to live there that all had to find different places to be. You know who you are, City of Independence employees, who have helped tremendously with this project. And we will be having the public dedication of this on June 15 at 10:00 AM at the north end of McCoy Park. So I certainly hope if you're interested in that, you'll be able to join us. to join us. We actually have residents in their 80s who grew up there who are going to be there to help us unveil that marker. And then the other thing is that the Truman Library gets all kinds of visitors, and on June the 10th, we are going to welcome presidential descendants. And so descendants from James Monroe, Ulysses S. Grant, Rutherford B. Hayes, William McKinley, Grover Cleveland, Teddy Roosevelt, Lyndon Johnson, and Truman will all be in this city for a celebration and a connection. So, you know, if you feel like you're not connected to the past, it's all happening right here in Independence. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. That was excellent. Also, I went to the Strawberry Festival, and it was the largest number of folks I'd ever seen there, so it was a great, great event, and it was also a great day. And other councilmembers have mentioned the other things I was going to mention, so there we go. Mr. City Manager, we'll turn it over to you. Any closing comments?
Just a couple. Thank you, Councilwoman McCandless, for the remarks about the storm cleanup. I would like to remind our residents that we have our drop-off depot this Saturday from 8:00 to 3:00. You'll be able to bring any remaining storm debris, as well as your usual treasures, to the drop-off depot. Would like to keep front of mind a couple of projects for our community. The Justice Center design work continues, and today we had a delegation of folks from the city who toured newer, opened justice centers across the metropolitan area. I think they covered some pretty good turf, going all over the metro, so I'm getting some very good ideas about what we would want to incorporate into a new Independence Justice Center. And similarly, our fire station design projects continue to advance as well. A lot of preliminary work with stakeholders from Fire Department, beginning to provide input, starting to provide some tours of fire stations across the metro as well. So those projects are all advancing. And then finally, part of the general obligation bond that's being contemplated, Community Center is a part of that, and we have both a feasibility study for a new Community Center being conducted, as well as some preliminary design work as well. So all of these major projects that you hear about here at the council meeting, real work is still going on day-to-day here at City Hall to advance those, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we can all see peers being driven and buildings coming out of the ground. That concludes my update, Mayor.
Thank you. With nothing else being said, we will move to executive session. Mr. Coover, do we need to announce where we're meeting?
We probably should. We're going to be meeting for executive session in Conference Room D, right across the hall.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and we'll go to executive session. Thank you.